All right, let's get at it. Let's start the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting, Thursday, December 17th, 2020, 6:01 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Devin is moving to approve the agenda, and Ryan seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Inga, are you going to switch over your screen? Ah, thank you. We're really figuring out this whole Zoom thing, right?
Right.
All right, very nice. Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Apparently, everybody was on mute but me.
Nice touch, Inga.
Thank you.
All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Inga?
Okay, is there anyone who wants to speak during the public comments? If you're on mute, there is a button in the lower left-hand corner if you're on a computer or tablet, and then if you're on a phone, it's *6 to unmute. I'm not seeing anybody at this time that would like to speak during public comments.
Okay, moving through the agenda. Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. We are done with the first page of the agenda. Way to go. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2020-480, annexation petition for William R. and Jacqueline F. McNaul revocable trust and Van Horn living trust from the town of Milton.
There are a number of items on the agenda tonight that are inherently related to one another, and there is a method to the madness in how they are agendized in the order that they are. And the first item that falls under that category is item number six, which is the ordinance which would allow for the annexation of the McNaul property and the Van Horn property, which are currently located in the town of Milton. These properties owners have submitted their own respective annexation petition to the City of Milton to have their properties annexed into the City of Milton, which constitutes roughly about 100 acres of land. Again, those owners have submitted those petitions, so they are considered unanimous petitions by state statutes. The Department of Administration has reviewed these annexations and has found them to be in the city's best interest to allow for the annexation to occur. And the city would need to approve ordinance 220-480 in order to finalize that annexation and have that filed with the DOA as an official annexation. This item is, like I mentioned before, kind of inherently related to items seven, eight, and nine, and 10. But we need to annex the land into the city, or the council needs to approve the annexation of the land into the city before we can effectively create TIF 11, which is number eight. So there is a kind of a rationale for their sequencing on the agenda. But I can go into more detail as to how that all goes together as those items move forward. Once annexed, they will be zoned industrial with the design overlay district. And at this time, it is Claussen Quality Chocolate's intention to purchase those land through a private sale with the property owners in order to create a larger 170-plus-acre development site for their future development. But the first step is we need to annex it into the city. So this was reviewed by the Plan Commission earlier today, and they forwarded a favorable recommendation to the Common Council as well.
Okay, I'll just go around and ask council members if they have any questions or comments on this. Ryan?
Nope, no questions or comments.
Teresa?
No.
Devin?
No questions or comments.
Larry?
No comments. As Al said, the Plan Commission approved it.
Linda?
No comments.
Bill? Okay. All right, so Mark asks, since this is an ordinance, if they make a motion, is there a second and third reading that might be waived, or?
Yes, you're correct. Because it's an ordinance, and it is set up like that, so if they move to approve, I would recommend that it be moved to approve, first reading waived, the second and third, and adopt.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would make that motion, Madam Mayor. Move to approve ordinance 224-80, to approve the first reading and waive the second and third, and adopt.
Larry, did you mean 2020-480?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, my reading is bad tonight. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to clarify.
480, thank you.
Yeah? Yeah, Linda, you wanted to second that?
Yes.
Okay, and then it's to waive the second and third reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2020-35, amending the TIF 6 project plan.
It's kind of indicated in the addenda materials this evening. Created one memo for Resolution 2020-35 and 2020-36, but they will require two separate motions as they are two separate actions. But again, they are inherently tied together. You really can't have one without the other. And I know a number of you have already kind of heard my rendition as to how this all came about, but nonetheless, I will do my best to give a truncated version of that. As Claussen Quality Chocolates began to pursue the assemblage of their development site within the City of Milton, as previously approved, they looked to purchase land that wasn't located in the City of Milton, approximately 100 acres that was just approved. Under normal circumstances, the City of Milton could simply amend an existing TIF district to then encompass those properties once they were annexed into the City of Milton. However, due to the state statute requirement that no municipality shall include more than 12% of its overall equalized value within TIF districts or a TIF district, the City of Milton is over that 12% threshold. So state statutes only allows for newly annexed land or newly TIF'd land to be added into a TIF so long as a commensurate amount is removed from another TIF in order to dip below that 12% threshold. And what they call that in state statutes is a simultaneous creation subtraction. So that's in essence what we are attempting to accomplish here. So the first resolution, 2020-35, amends TIF 6 by removing four parcels from the existing TIF 6 to allow the City of Milton to temporarily dip below the 12% threshold and then create TIF 11, which then encompasses the lands that will be annexed into the City of Milton. So the parcels that are being removed from TIF 6, as represented in Resolution 2020-35, will allow the City of Milton to dip below 12%. In fact, it'll dip well below 12%. By the removal of the Charter NEX Films property, the city only needed to remove about $4 million from its existing TIFs. And the Charter NEX property actually has a value with personal property closer to nine. So that will get the city below the 12% threshold. And although the land that is being annexed into the city really has very little nominal value because it's agricultural land, so long as that land has a value of $1, we wouldn't be able to include it into a TIF until we dip below that 12% threshold. So Resolution 2020-35 amends the boundary for TIF 6 and its corresponding project plan to remove the Charter NEX Films site from TIF 6 as well as the lands that will be owned by Claussen Quality Chocolates once they acquire the sites. And the reason those lands need to be removed is at some point in the future, once Claussen executes their purchases from the three private property owners plus the City of Milton, they will eventually combine those parcels into one development site. And by state law, TIF districts cannot bisect an existing parcel. So anticipating the inevitable combination of those sites, but for the removal of those parcels that will be owned by Claussen Quality Chocolates that are currently in TIF 6, at some point in the future, when they combine those lots, we would be in violation of state law by having a parcel that is bisected by a TIF line, which would be TIF 6. So it's a premature removal of those properties. Those properties have little to no value in terms of TIF because, one, they're part of its own by the city, and, two, the piece that's in the city is assessed at ag value. But nonetheless, it's a premature move to remove those parcels from TIF 6 so that we don't get into a situation in which we are forced to amend TIF 6 once those parcels are combined. So in terms of 2020-35, that is the amendment to TIF 6 project plan and boundary to remove those parcels. Then Resolution 2020-36 creates TIF 11. And that TIF consists of 11 parcels, which will eventually become the... Majority of it will become the Claussen Quality Chocolate site as well as some additional parcels that we know have planned development and those that we needed to include in order to create a contiguous boundary. We can't leapfrog parcels in the TIF world. They have to be... There has to be a nexus created through contiguousness. So we included those 11 parcels in there. Eventually, four of those parcels will be combined to become one. We also included the land that the city will be likely acquiring around the first of the year from the Bellardi Family Living Trust, which is also on the agenda tonight. So TIF 11 will mostly serve Claussen Quality Chocolates, but will also allow us to continue to market and incentivize the land that the city is acquiring as well as capture increment from those projects that we know are going to occur, one of which is also on tonight's agenda. So we have a full agenda tonight. So that is kind of the long-winded explanation as to why 2020-35 and 2020-36 are inherently tied together. Both of these project plans and their corresponding boundaries have been reviewed by the Plan Commission and the Joint Review Board. The Joint Review Board is a group of individuals made up from the overlying taxing jurisdictions, meaning the school district, the county, Blackhawk Technical College, and the city. They have reviewed these documents and their project plans and their boundaries, and the Plan Commission forwarded a favorable recommendation. The Joint Review Board will meet again tomorrow at 1 o'clock to give their final approval to the project plans and boundaries, pending approval from the Common Council this evening for the amendment of TIF 6 and the creation of TIF 11. So I believe I covered everything for the next two items in that one presentation. But as noted, we will need two separate motions and two separate approvals for both of those resolutions. And we can take them one at a time now, but it's kind of hard to explain one without the other. So folks have questions about either of those items or just one of those items, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions. Clear as mud, right?
Oh, you said we need two motions per each number, so we need two motions for...
Nope, just a motion. You would need one motion to approve Resolution 2020-35 and a second motion to approve Resolution 2020-36.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Well, if that was the only part that was confusing, then I did a good job.
Well, we're going to have team-building questions on your little presentation there, so I hope everybody paid attention.
I think this was the shortest version of this presentation I've given outside of Joint Review Board and Plan Commission, but most of you have seen this already, and you're all well aware of kind of what the process has been for the last several months, so...
Okay.
But I don't want to leave anything out.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Oh, not really.
Teresa?
You're muted.
All right, I was... Okay, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. And Devin?
I don't have anything.
And Larry?
No questions.
And Linda?
No questions. Very nice, clear explanation, Al. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's just trying to get team-building points. Bill, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion? And this is resolution, so different from an ordinance, so there isn't any waiver of readings or anything?
Correct.
Linda?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-35, amending the TIF 6 project plan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any last-minute questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, good job. Moving on to number eight, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2020-36, creating TIF 11. Is... Any questions or comments on this one? They're very tied together. Raise your hand now. Do you have any questions or comments? All right, is there a motion?
I can make that motion.
Is that to approve?
Resolution.
2020-36?
Thank you.
Creating TIF 11?
Yes, creating TIF 11.
All right, gotcha.
Second.
And then there's a second from Bill Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a TIF development agreement with Claussen Quality Chocolates. Been a lot of talk in the community about the chocolate.
Indeed. Most people are just asking me, where's Putman Parkway? That's the most common question I get, actually. So now that we are on the precipice of creating TIF 11, which won't actually officially be created until the Joint Review Board officially approves it tomorrow, in anticipation of that, we have drafted a TIF development agreement with Claussen Quality Chocolates, which would incentivize the development of their first phase of development, which is a 390,000-square-foot facility just north of Putman Parkway on the southern portion of their future 169-acre lot. This is a pay-go TIF development agreement. And what I mean when I say that is as increment or as taxes are generated from the creation of that project, the city will provide an incentive that is close to commensurate to that increase in value. It actually works out to be about 85% of the value they create, they would receive as an incentive in the pay-go format. Their total incentive through this package would be about $5.3 million. And the TIF development agreement is constructed in such a way that they will receive their annual pay-go payments, which is 85% of the taxes they've created, on an annual basis for 12 years or until they've received $5.387 million, whichever comes first. So it is to their advantage to create a value higher than what they're projecting, which is not less than $29 million, so they can recoup their incentive quicker. As part of this TIF development agreement, they also agree to purchase 9.1 acres of land from the city as well as extend Putman Parkway to their site, to the entrance of their site, as well as extend a rail line roughly about 3,500 linear feet from the existing rail spur to the west of Penn Color, moving in an easterly direction along the southern boundary of Putman Parkway, and then northerly into their site. So Claussen Quality Chocolates has agreed to purchase the land from the private property owners, purchase the land from the City of Milton, extend Putman Parkway, extend a rail line, and construct a 390,000-square-foot facility. And in return, the City of Milton would provide that incentive so long as they meet the value estimates as projected within the TIF development agreement. This first phase of their development is one phase of their projecting at this point, three phases of development. But those future developments are still yet to be determined or yet to be finalized. But they're talking about that facility probably tripling in size over the subsequent phases and their number of employees to probably quadruple or more as their phases progress. But this TIF development agreement only pertains to their first phase of development, which is the 390,000-square-foot facility. They intend to start construction on the rail line, Putman Parkway, and their facility as soon as they can in 2021, weather permitting, and will have all of those items completed no later than December 31st of 2022. I think that covers the highlights of the TIF development agreement.
Okay. Linda, any questions or comments?
No.
Larry? You're muted. You're still muted.
No, I... No questions.
Okay, thanks. Devin?
No.
Bill?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Teresa?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the TIF development agreement with Claussen Quality Chocolate.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments we may have missed? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2020-34, authorizing the execution of closing documents and warranty deed for the sale of land to Claussen Quality Chocolate Incorporated.
So although the TIF development agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the two entities between the City of Milton and Claussen Quality Chocolates, and one of those obligations is for the City of Milton to sell land to Claussen Quality Chocolates, Resolution 2020-34 still needs to be approved by the Common Council, which authorizes the execution of the closing documents and warranty deed for the sale of land. Although we have not scheduled a closing for that sale of land, again, it's kind of one of those things we wanted to get this in order. So when that does happen, likely in the very early weeks of January, we will have this authorization to go ahead and schedule a closing and transfer that land to Claussen Quality Chocolates, as outlined in the TIF development agreement.
Okay, Bill Wilson, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, thanks. Devin?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Ryan?
No question.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a motion? Linda?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-34, authorizing signatures on the deed.
I will second that motion.
For the sale of land to Claussen Quality Chocolate Incorporated?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Want to post? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a permanent rail spur easement agreement along land located south of Putman Parkway owned by Bellardi Family Investments LLC.
So although the Common Council has approved the acquisition of land owned by Bellardi Family Investments, Bellardi Family Investments actually owns two tracts of land south of Putman Parkway, and the city will only be acquiring a portion of one. So we need to secure a rail easement along both parcels, even though we will be acquiring one of them, as a contingency for Claussen Quality Chocolates to ensure that they have the proper alignment for the rail to be constructed once they finalize their contingencies. So it seems a little counterintuitive that the city's going to buy land, but before we buy land, we give ourselves an easement, but it is really a matter of timing and how those are executed. In the event that, for some unknown reason, this all falls apart, this rail easement agreement would not be recorded. But even if everything moves forward and the city does buy the land from Bellardi Family Investments LLC, they would still require an easement on the other piece of land owned by Bellardi Family Investments. So the item on the agenda this evening is a permanent rail spur easement agreement along both parcels owned by the Bellardi Family Investments LLC that runs south of Putman Parkway in the City of Milton.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Brian? Brian, you're on mute.
No, I don't have anything. That's it.
Devin?
No questions.
Bill?
No question.
Larry?
The only question I had, Al, was how long is this valid? You know what I mean? Because you might not implement it for a while. Does that cause any issues or concerns?
It's a good question. You know, I think the... I don't have an exact answer to it. Perhaps Attorney Schrader does, but what likely will happen is once the contingencies are met for the acquisition of the Claussen Quality Chocolate sales, the city will then execute its offer with Bellardi Family Living Trust to purchase land from Bellardi Family Living Trust. And at that time, these items will be recorded. In the event that all of those things fall through, this document wouldn't be recorded, so it would be somewhat moot. But it is Claussen's intention to purchase their properties, assuming all contingencies are met, early on in January. And in the event this drags on for months and months and months, there's probably... It's probably likely that other things would supersede this, and this would no longer be necessary.
Got you.
I don't want to speculate, but that's kind of my best answer.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Linda?
No questions.
Did I hit everybody? Is there a motion? Bill?
No questions. No questions here.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the permanent rail spur easement agreement.
Teresa, did you want to second that?
Sure, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on Resolution 2020-29, authorizing the issuance and sale of 1,650,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes.
So continuing the trend of talking about this Claussen Quality Chocolates deal, I've said enough, so I can turn it over to Dan. But just, this is for the acquisition of the Bellardi property. And the Common Council has already approved this at October 20th. But this is the approval for the actual issuance of the dollars from our local financial institutions in order to execute that sale when closing is established.
That was a good summary. As we talked about two months ago now, we reached out, looked at a couple different options for financing the land purchase that was discussed on item number 10. And the most affordable and most flexible is working with First Community and Bank of Milton and splitting the amount down the middle at $825,000 apiece. And inside that resolution tonight are two banknotes with each institution for $825,000. And just the rough estimate that... And just the rough estimate that Minister Hulick and I have looked at will likely probably have this paid off in four to five years. When we look at the cash flows of all the various funding sources that can help pay off this debt to six, to nine and to 11. So we're just seeking approval of resolution 2020-29. Any questions?
Bill, Linda, Larry, Devin, Teresa, Ryan, any questions?
No questions.
Linda, thank you everybody. Okay. I feel like it's the Brady Bunch here. Okay, is there a motion? Teresa?
Yes, I'll move to approve the resolution 2020-29 authorizing issuance and sale of 1,650,000 taxable generation, general obligation promissory notes.
Linda, you seconded that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a TIF development agreement with IHT Investments LLC?
Yes, so there is more going on in city Milton than just the creation of chocolate. This item is for TIF development agreement for IHT Investments, which owns Carl's Place, which is currently located on East High Street. IHT Investments intends to construct a 50,000 plus square foot facility on about 8.17 acres of land owned by the city of Milton. In fact, early in this evening's agenda, under the consent portion of it, the CSM to create this lot was approved by the common council. This TIF development agreement is much more straightforward than the, the mammoth one for Clausen Quality Chocolates, but nonetheless still important in that it also is a pay-go incentive that is commensurate with the value created from the creation of this new facility on this lot. It's Carl's intent to move his facility, his business, which is currently on High Street, to this location once it is constructed. Again, this one is much more straightforward. 10 years of increment will be provided to the developer so long as they create a commensurate tax value as outlined in the TIF development agreement. They intend to begin construction early in 2021 and have the project completed by the end of 2021. And the development site also allows for the building to be expanded by an additional 90,000 square feet at some point in the future as his business continues to grow rapidly as it is. You may recall earlier this year, just this very year, we approved a site plan for an expansion to Carl's current facility. So happy to see the success that he's had in Milton and in just a few short months outgrew his existing facility and is now looking to more than double that just right down the street and has plans to potentially even double it further in the future. But this TIF development agreement only encompasses the sale of land as well as the first phase of development, which is 50,000 plus square foot facility.
Any questions or comments? Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Teresa?
No.
Devin?
No questions or comments.
Larry?
No.
Linda?
I have a question. We need to bring for the second phase, will this come back to the council and the plan commission as site plan and et cetera?
Yeah, once he comes forward, if and when he comes forward with his second phase of development, that would fall under a site plan review and potentially a conditional use permit. But and the only way it would come back to the common council is if there was an additional TIF development agreement that was negotiated or if there was a conditional use permit requested for the second phase of his development. But the second, the expansion would come back to the plan commission at a minimum.
My other question is, did his, what was the outcome of plan commission?
Plan commission reviewed the site plan and approved it unanimously earlier today. It was only the site plan, so he didn't have a conditional use permit, but they did approve the site plan as well as the land division to create the lot.
Great.
The only, the only conversation we had was regarding a monument sign and the potential location of that in the future of the plan commission recommended if he was going to have a monument sign that he would include that in the plan as we move forward. I think that's right, right now?
Yep.
Thanks, Larry. Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval.
Is there a second? Linda?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We're done with page two of the agenda. Congratulations. We're on the third and final page. Discussion and possible action regarding a site plan and conditional use permit for Freedom Graphics located at 1475 East High Street for an expansion to their existing facility.
So Freedom Graphics located along High Street, this is their facility on High Street, not the one on, on Janesville Street, is looking to expand their facility by about 81,000 square feet. In the M2 Zone District, anytime a facility exceeds 100,000 square feet, a conditional use permit is required or a permit is required to be updated, which is in the case of Freedom Graphics facility there. They currently have about 120,000 square feet, I think is what, or 130,000 square feet, which is what Jeff indicated at the plan commission meeting. So this is just a conditional use permit to allow for a, their facility to expand beyond that 130,000 square foot that they already have. This is similar to what Charter NEX did a few years ago when they had their large scale expansion at their facility. So this is a zoning requirement. The plan commission reviewed, held a public hearing, reviewed the conditional use permit and the site plan and approved both of those items unanimously. So the council's role in this is to simply approve the conditional use permit, but the site plan is inherently intertwined in it as well.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions. No questions.
Linda?
No questions, but I, I'm really happy to see that Freedom Graphics is doing this expansion. They've been very, they've been a good business to have in Milton and I'm thankful they're here.
Thanks, Larry.
Get over to Linda's comments and I have no question.
Devin?
No questions.
I agree with Linda's comments, but no questions.
Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Is there a motion? Linda?
I make a motion to approve the site plan and conditional, oh, wait a minute. Wrong one. To approve the site plan and conditional use permit for Freedom Graphics located at 1475 East High Street for their expansion to their existing facility.
Mark?
Just for clarification, is it correct that the motion be to approve the conditional use permit for Freedom Graphics as approved by the plan commission? As, as indicated by Al, he wouldn't have any role in, in the site plan. He just noted that that was approved by the plan commission.
I'll make that in my motion.
I'll second.
Does everybody get that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, thanks for sticking around. Spent a lot of, a lot of minutes in a meeting.
Yes.
You're welcome to stay for team building. It's only another hour or so, so no. And you're free to leave.
Thank, thank you again.
Well.
Take care, Jeff.
Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding a site plan and conditional use permit for Storage Wisconsin located at 1135 South Janesville Street for outdoor storage.
Similarly to the last item, Wisconsin Storage had requested a conditional use permit for the parking of U-Haul vehicles on their site. As part of that, they submitted a site plan as well to the plan commission to denote where that parking would take place. Because the vehicles are not associated with the primary use of the facility, a conditional use permit is required because it's considered outdoor storage or outdoor display. So a conditional use permit is required. Plan commission held a public hearing, reviewed the site plan and conditional use permit and forwarded a favorable recommendation, approved the site plan and forwarded a favorable recommendation on the conditional use permit to the common council.
Any questions or comments? Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Teresa?
No.
Devin?
I just wanted to say I will be abstaining from this vote. I have a professional interest with the property.
Okay. Larry?
We, the plan commission did ascertain that it would be trucks or pickup trucks and not trailers, just in case anybody's wondering about what would be kept there. And it would be no more than four, I believe that's correct, at any one time.
Linda?
Does this include landscaping on the subdivision side of the property?
The landscape, because they're not adding any impervious surface, their landscaping requirement didn't increase. However, their landscaping, this existing tree line that separates the storage units from the residential neighborhood would be sufficient and beyond sufficient for, for what they currently have on the site and what they intend to use the site. So this wouldn't trigger an increase in landscaping or lighting. Their existing site plan already covers both of those items.
And the plan commission was satisfied with landscaping? As being, you know?
Yeah, it was, it was brought up. Yeah, it was brought up, Linda, at the commission.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
So again, this motion would be to approve the conditional use permit for Wisconsin Storage or Storage Wisconsin.
Larry?
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit as presented for Storage Wisconsin.
And Teresa, you wanted to second that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
And.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mark S.
Yes, and, and again, just as in the most, last motion, if you can add the wording as approved by the plan commission in the event there are any conditions, it's just a good practice, I think, that if the plan commission has, for instance, imposed any conditions as a part of the conditional use permit, then by that wording, you have specifically incorporated that condition in your approval. So that's why I'm asking for that.
Would you like me to re-read the whole thing or I'll just allow that to be added?
And so, yes, and so amended, yes.
So Larry just said he amended it to add that. Teresa?
And with the amendment.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to the TIF development agreement with Mark and Rhonda Mitchell and Mitchell House Coffee located at 130 Front Street.
So Mark and Rhonda Mitchell have entered into a TIF development agreement with the city of Milton in the middle of 2019 to renovate, resurrect the old mill property located at 130 Front Street. They have been unable to meet the obligation or the completion date outlined in their TIF development agreement due to a variety of things, none, not, nonetheless, the pandemic and just the issues they've encountered with renovating a 100-plus year old building. So they have discussed with me the possibility of extending or amending their TIF development agreement to allow for the extension to be completed by December 31st of 2021, so by the end of next year in order to meet their, their full property value guarantee obligation within the TIF development agreement.
Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions. No questions.
Linda?
Questions.
Larry?
I think, I think, Al, we have, we have done this before, I believe in the city. Is that correct?
amended TIF development agreements?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, this one is a little unique, but, but, you know, as kind of indicated in the memo, you know, once they get to their full completion and they meet their minimum property value guarantee, in essence, it's extending the development agreement and thus extending their obligation by one year, but they're comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Ryan?
No question.
Is there a motion? Linda?
No question.
Mark, you have a question? No.
Al, Al, I just wanted to make, make sure that, that you did receive the updated one that had the updated dates in it because it had been worked out some months ago, so we had to update the.
Yeah, and that's, that's what's included in the packet. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Linda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Mitchell TIF amendment for Mitchell Coffee House located at 130 Front Street.
Teresa?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. We're almost done. I'm just saying that to cheer myself on really at this point. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution 2020-33 authorizing the execution of closing documents and warranty deed for the sale of land to Catch the Waves Swim Club.
So this is a very similar item to what was previously on the agenda for Clausen Quality Chocolates. This is a resolution that would authorize the execution of the closing documents and warranty deed for the land sale to catch the wave. Earlier this year in November, the common council approved a TIF development agreement to sell 1.16 acres of land to catch the wave. This will allow us to have that closing occur probably sometime quickly after the first of the year. So same methodology and logic applies here for resolution 2020-33. It simply allows for the authorization of those documents that were outlined in the TIF development agreement.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Linda?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Devin?
No.
Larry?
No.
Bill?
No questions.
Is there a motion? Linda?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2020-33 authorizing the execution of closing documents and warranty deed for the sale of land to Catch the Waves Swim Club Incorporated.
Teresa?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? That motion carries. We are done with motions.
So just so folks are aware, and I still see that Carl is on there, I don't know if he's listening, we'll have a similar item to what was just approved for the sale of land to IHT Developments, probably at our first meeting in January as well, so.
Well, thank you, everyone, for sticking this out. The council and the staff are not allowed to leave, but anybody else can. Mark S. Well, thank you, everyone, for sticking this out. The council and the staff are not allowed to leave, but anybody else can. Mark S. Oh, I see. The courier flew off of the meeting.
Well, we gave her a lot of things to write about. A lot of these things I know she started writing about weeks ago in anticipation of tonight's meeting, and she's been in contact with me several times today, so I'm sure she's got a full slate tonight.
Right, so she's not the only one whose head is going to explode after the meeting, just so you know. All right. Committee reports. I know there were meetings. Does anybody want to tell us about those meetings? Ryan?
Historic Preservation Met, right after, well, the day after the last council meeting. And if you get a chance, go to the Milton E Cemetery and look at the Goodrich Plot. It's been cleaned up and tidied up, and the wall has been kind of cleaned out around as well. So if you get a chance, go see the Goodrich Plot.
Thank you.
Besides that, we're working on a work plan.
Great, great.
Anything else that I missed?
Other committees that have met. Teresa?
The Gathering Place Committee hasn't met, and we won't meet again until the, the new year, but I would also invite people to come up and see the, the work on the renovation of the Gathering Green behind the Gathering Place. A lot of work has been done to get started on that area, and each of the areas that are going to be completed have been assigned with a sign to show you what parts will be done, just to give people the idea of the design of that area. So if you want to at least drive by and look at those areas.
That's a really good idea with the signs. Yep. Any other committee reports? Linda?
I will report a little bit on the Fire Commission meeting. I, we have, the, the Town Board and the City of Milton have signed the addendum between Jamesville, the town, and the city. We're, we're going into some pretty serious and very big historical things here, and I just would like to make the recommendations to, to Devin and Ryan. Take a look at the Fire Commission videos that Inga has so graciously posted for us. There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of things going on, and I really truly feel like we're going to have a lot more. So that's, that's just my recommendation. I don't know if any Bill or Teresa have anything else to add.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for committee reports?
Plan Commission met this evening, but we talked about the vast majority of items on tonight's agenda, so.
You're all in the loop. We're all in a, we're all in this together.
So, um, just quick, the Parks Recreation Commission and Story Garden Subcommittee, they're going to be meeting next week on Monday, and those agendas are already posted on the website and at Piggly Wiggly and, and Dave's and at City Hall.
Thanks. Linda?
I just want to give a shout out to Leanne. I really appreciated her putting the agendas two weeks out like she did and for us. I don't know if that was, was that you, Inga, or that was Leanne, right? Oh, no. Okay.
No, I, I put together the Parks Rec Agenda and the Story Gardens Agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, you thinking, Inga? Is that what you're doing, Linda?
No, I'm just thinking that it was very nice to get both this week and next week. It just, it just helps out. We're all very busy people.
Yes. We are. Yep. Okay, staff reports. Howie?
Well, snow palling went well for the first time, so it was, we had new people doing routes, so it worked out well that it wasn't a huge storm, so that went good. Unfortunately, we sent out thirty snow letters in the last two days for people that won't shovel their sidewalks, and we've been getting complaints from other people because there's a lot more walking going on about, you know, for us to keep doing that, so if they don't melt off this weekend, next Monday, we'll have to go shovel sidewalks, but otherwise, it's, they're just doing winter, you know, just taking care of winter items to get ready for next summer, and otherwise, it's just finishing up projects from last year.
Okay. Teresa?
Just a comment about that, Howie, too. I don't know about any of the other older persons, but I received several phone calls of people complaining and, of course, referred them to you. But, you know, I rate that there was no resolution of dealing with those sidewalks in any type of immediate resolution, that they had to wait through this process in dealing with it, and in the meantime, that would freeze over, and there was a potential for injuries and so forth, so yeah, there, there were some very unhappy people.
One request we have been getting is if we could speed up the residential number of hours that we let people shovel their snow, so right now you have sixty hours after it quits, and that was originally done so that if someone was gone on a Friday for a weekend, they could have until Monday to get back, but it, it does, it is probably more often than not a long time to allow people to shovel, so.
Yeah.
So we might want to consider shortening up that time.
Right. And that, yeah, I think that's, forty-eight hours sounds like plenty to me, but I do understand what you're saying sometimes if you're gone.
All right, Mark is telling you guys to stop because this isn't on the agenda.
Okay.
This is definitely something we could put on a future agenda, though.
Yeah.
That is the last word on that. That's okay. That's okay. Howie, are you done now?
Yeah, I'll mute myself, so.
Mute yourself, but try to stay away. Try to stay away.
Ego, would you adjust that, please, the last couple minutes?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll edit the tape.
Okay.
Okay, I'm glad we got all this on the record. It's been a long night. It's, it's been a long year. We're almost out of it.
It's 2020.
Okay, Dan, anything?
No, we got the last of the routes to recovery money, and we even got a bonus amount of nine grand. I'm in the process of general entering the last amounts, and either tomorrow or sometime next week, I'll send out an email to council and the department directors to just let them know how we allocate, how, how it was allocated and the grand total and all that fun stuff.
Thanks, Dan. Chief?
I'll throw a thanks, Dan, in there, too. Those reimbursement process can be pretty arduous, and so appreciate the work that he did to get some of that money back to us. I got a few things for you tonight. I found out last week that Conlon, who is the president of our police commission, has moved out of the city and therefore had to resign from the commission and have passed that on to the mayor. Hopefully, we can get somebody appointed soon because we have work to do. As I mentioned, at the last meeting, Kyle Johnson is moving on to a chief role in the Village of Roberts, so it's creating a promotional opportunity for the department. It appears I have enough people interested inside the department to run an internal promotional process, and so we're going to be kicking that off sometime in the next month. The, the written test will be towards the end of January and hopefully have somebody in place within a month after that. Because it's an internal process, that means then we will also have to backfill for an officer position as well. So the commission's got some work to do coming up here soon, and we'll get a new officer on board sometime in the first six months of next year, it sounds like. The, the feel-good piece of the week was doing shop with a cop with twenty-four kids in combination with the School District of Milton and a very generous grant from Walmart. We had a great shop with a cop that looked completely different, but what looks the same compared to last year and everything that we do. So we met with twenty-three kids online in Google Meets to shop online with them, and it didn't go flawlessly. There were some glitches, but it all went well. And a couple of the kids decided they wanted deliveries from officers with stuff that wasn't shipped straight to their house. Some of it was picked up at Walmart. So I got to deliver some presents to one of my kiddos today, and sorry to say, he didn't social distance, but when a seven-year-old jumps at you for a hug, you kind of can't say no, so I was wearing my mask, however. So that always perks me up for the holidays when we do shop with cops, so that was pretty awesome. That's all I got.
Nice. Thanks. Ashley?
The southern ramp for our Story Gardens was installed last week before the snow came, so that's very exciting. That's moving along. And then the Library Board approved our three-year strategic plan, so we have some guidance for us for the next three years.
Thanks. Thank you. Mark E?
I don't have much. Probably looking at the, wrapping up the capital improvement plan and presenting that early next year, though, so.
Okay, is that everybody? Did I get everybody? All right, well, that means.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask a favor of Ashley?
I don't know. Ask Mark S.
Okay, Mark, can I ask? Ashley, could you send a strategic plan out to us? I'd be interested in just seeing if you don't mind, or.
Yeah, for sure.
That'd be cool. Thank you. Sorry.
No, you don't have to say you're sorry. As long as Mark S is not, like, cutting my head off, then I'm fine. All right, I know it's been a really long night, but it is like our last meeting, isn't it? Is it our last meeting? Okay, all right. It's our last meeting of 2020, and I just want to thank all of you, staff and elected officials and Mark S for hanging in there with us through a very different year. It looked very different for us. It's going to still look a little bit different till things are, things calm down with community spread and everything, and you guys have just been troopers, you know, doing all these Zoom meetings, and you're, you're all experts now, like, really? Look at all the brain cells and pathways we've created. I've been doing a lot of studying of neuroscience, and I, I promise you, you're all smarter after this year. Okay? Howie doesn't believe me, but it's true. On a festive note, a festive note, and it won't require any dancing, I promise. So let's think of what our favorite classic, classic means like it's got to be at least ten years old. Class, and you can choose one or the other, a classic Christmas or holiday movie that is your favorite to share with us, or a classic holiday or Christmas carol or song. And you don't have to sing it. You don't have to. You don't have to act out the movie. Next year, we're going to start with charades, but only when we meet in person.
I'll go first. I'll do both. I know I brought this up in the past, but I very much like the Carpenter's Christmas albums. Pretty much anything on there is fantastic. And then movie-wise, It's Wonderful Life is the classic, in my opinion.
What year?
I think it was 1933.
Yes, I think it was, Al.
Grand Capra? Yep.
Okay, so I'll go next because I was going to say the same thing, except for since you've already said Carpenter's, I'll go ahead and say that my favorite music would, after the Carpenter's, would be the Barbara Mandaral Christmas CD. You can't find it anywhere anymore, but it's just a beautiful, just beautiful. And the movie, definitely.
Howie, Howie's like rushing.
I already know exactly what Howie's going to say. I know. That's why he raised his hand. He's volunteering. I know it.
And Al, it was forty-six, by the way. It was forty-six.
Was it forty-six, Chief?
Yeah, forty-six.
I suppose they talked about World War II in there, so they wouldn't have talked about it.
Right.
I knew Howie would say Christmas Vacation.
Howie, you said Christmas Vacation?
Yeah, it's a classic.
Yeah, I just didn't hear you because Al was talking over you. Do you have a song?
No.
Christmas Vacation.
Yeah, the album.
The album, the soundtrack, okay. Larry?
It's both a movie and a song in Crosby, White Christmas.
It's a traditional one of my family, too.
Do you have the, oh, oh, Mark S. Oh, this is unheard of. Mark S always goes second or last.
I can go home after this, right?
No. You never know what's going to happen when you're not around. You've seen how wild and crazy they are today.
Favorite song, Be Joy to the World? And favorite movie? One, well, I guess Home Alone.
That's a cool one. Nice. Nice. Ryan?
So Larry took my first pick, Mark took my second pick. I'm going to go Die Hard.
It's a Christmas movie? I don't even remember it.
It's a Christmas movie. There are a lot of debate online about.
What, one of the sequels, right? I agree.
First two are Christmas movies. After that, it's not.
Yep.
Okay. Devin?
My favorite movie is the Santa Claus series with Tim Allen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nice.
I'm going to go with Elf. Christmas movie.
It's not really a Christmas movie, but it's a Christmas tradition. Mom and I like to watch Seven Brides for Seven Brothers around Christmas. I love that musical, and then probably my favorite song is any version of Baby, It's Cold Outside.
I'm going to go. I wonder if any of you guys have heard of this movie. It was set in Wisconsin, and it's called All Mine to Give, and it's a true story. Howie, anything? No? Nobody? Okay, so your assignment is, for the new year, to watch that movie, find it, watch it, get your Kleenexes, write a review for team building. What's it? It's called All Mine to Give. It's based on a true story. A, a family that immigrated to the state of Wisconsin. It was done in 1957. And so that's one of my favorite movies, and they, it's really hard to find it on TV anymore. They used to play it every year, and I'm not even going to tell you about it because it'll ruin everything for you. And then my favorite one is the song I played at the beginning, "Christmas, Baby, Please, Please Come Home." Lots of, lots of different versions of that out there, so. So Al is looking up All Mine to Give right now.
Of course I am, especially since he said 1957. That's right in my wheelhouse, man. I would love that. Yeah.
Got to watch it.
Don't feel too bad, and he said they don't have Charlie Brown Christmas on either.
They do on PBS.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was on last week. It was on, I think, CBS. We DVR'd it for the boys.
Okay, who are we missing? Mark E?
I'm going to go with Christmas Story.
Nice. Anything else?
Oh, and for our Christmas song, I'll go with Jimmy Buffett's Christmas in the Caribbean from 1985.
Dan's ready for a vacation.
So there was one Christmas movie I remember watching a lot when we were kids, and it starred Dolly Parton, and it was like, it was called Smoky Mountain Christmas or something. Did anyone ever watch that one?
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, we rented it all the time at the local video store. It's like, we rented it all the time at the local video store that was down by...
You know, did you guys realize that Bill Wilson skipped out on us?
I made note of that.
He told us, he told us that he was going to do that in his email that he sent us earlier today.
Oh, well, then it's all right.
All right, he's just saying that, because he didn't want to do team building. So who do we, did everybody go? Teresa, did you go?
No.
No.
I, you know, I would say my movie is It's a Wonderful Life, what Al had said earlier, and my song is, there's tons of them, Silent Night. Yeah, I like Silent Night, but, yeah. I like them all. I love Christmas music.
Oh. Scott and Mark E., is that right? Is there anybody else left?
Everybody stole all my movies. Favorite song, a little different version of Silent Night, Still a Knock by Manheim Steamroller is one of my all-time favorites.
Yes, yes.
Fargo Count?
Uh, it could.
Original Fargo?
I don't know. I like a lot of the movies and a lot of the songs that people mention, so.
Die Hard and Fargo.
Yeah, really.
I could go with Gremlins, maybe. That's during Christmas.
That's true. That's true. All right.
My little granddaughter yesterday called me or connected with me on Zoom and saying, "All I want for Christmas is my two front teeth," because she's missing three teeth, so. I like that song.
That's cute. It's cute. Very cute. All right, I think that's it for us. Our next meeting is January 5th, 2021. And like I told Plan Commission, stay safe, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, wear a mask, no big parties, get a vaccine if they offer it to you. And that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn? Linda?
Merry Christmas. So moved. And thank you, Anisa, for all that you have done in 2020.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And city staff, and...
Yeah.
Yes, and city staff.
I'm grateful to all of you. Blessed Christmas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carries, and we are adjourned for the year of 2020. We want you all to be back here in 2021. See you later.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Bye, buddy.
Bye.
Bye-bye.